Number six, two thousand and sixteen, Riverton City Council Finance Committee meeting to order at six forty-five P. M. The Chair would entertain a motion for the consideration of claims.
Um, Madam Chairman, consideration claims to pay the amount of seven hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and fifty, or ninety-five cents. Checks written for payroll and liabilities for ten twenty-eight this year in the amount of six hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-four cents. And manual checks in the amount of fifty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-four cents, for a total of one million, four hundred, fourteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-three cents.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Does anyone have any questions about the bills?
We've got two questions.
Okay, Martin?
Uh, there's a, they're not big amounts, but there's, for the Days Inn, there's a restitution for twenty-five bucks, and then also for a Chris Hubbard, a restitution for twenty-five.
Um, Your Honor, those are, restitutions are typically through the court, so...
That's what, that's what caught my eye, was it didn't, wasn't a reimbursement, it was restitution.
Yeah, restitution, so I think initially, they were cited into court, I know the Days Inn, the manager was, I'm not sure if, we can look at it right here.
But wouldn't that be in the manager's name?
Yeah, it was property damage, property damage.
Two, eight-two.
Eight-two, the Days Inn.
Madam Chairwoman?
Yeah.
If I could, those would come from defendants, individual defendants paying the court, and then the court paying the victim of an offense. So that's nothing that the city would be involved in, other than, the court is the conduit for that, but that's not really city money, it's not taxpayer money, that's defendant money being passed through to the victim.
Thank you.
Cool. Thank you, Chief.
Any others? Okay. Then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes, and meeting adjourned.
I now call the December sixth, two thousand and sixteen, regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at seven P. M. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and after that, we'll have an invocation by Councilmember Peterson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Heavenly Father, we are grateful for this opportunity we have to gather together as city council and city employees to discuss the needs of this great city that we call home. And we ask you to please open our hearts and our minds to be able to consider those things which were brought before us today, then we'll be able to do things that are pleasing to the constituents, which we serve. And Heavenly Father, we are grateful for this great city that we have, and this time of the season, as we all come together and be able to share the love that we have for each other. And Heavenly Father, we ask for these things in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Would the city clerk please lead, uh, call a roll?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilmember Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilmember Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Sean Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Bailey from the meeting this evening.
Motion to excuse Councilman Mike Bailey.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. I declare that we have a quorum. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agendas presented this evening.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion or amendments to the agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Communications from the floor. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves from the record. The next item of business would be city clerk, please read the consent, agenda items by title only.
Yes, Your Honor, approval of the minutes, November fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, December sixth, two thousand and sixteen, Finance Committee meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee recommendations for December sixth, two thousand and sixteen, and approval of the municipal court report for the month of November, two thousand and sixteen.
Thank you. Are there any items requiring further discussion?
Your Honor.
Holly?
Recommendations from Finance Committee for bills to be paid in the amount of seven hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and ninety-five cents. Checks written in the payroll, for payroll and liabilities for ten twenty-eight sixteen in the amount of six hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-four cents. Manual checks in the amount of fifty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-four cents, for a total of one million, four hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-three cents.
Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Your Honor, make a motion that we approve the consent agenda. Second.
Been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. The next thing is Planning Commission member appointments. Um, we'd like to appoint for the, we'd like to appoint Doug Malik, who has been serving as an alternate to the Planning Commission, as a regular member of the Planning Commission, and appoint Dave Kellner, who's in the audience today, as an alternate to the Planning Commission. Could we have the Development Director's report, please?
Yes, Your Honor. City of Riverton has citizens' boards that help us formulate policies and procedures, and the boards for the Community Development Department are the Planning Commission and Construction Board of Appeals. We recently had one of our board members resign, Steve Beasley, who worked on the Planning Commission, since he's taken a job in Casper. And we're going to miss his expertise and his experience, but we want to thank him for his service. Mr. Beasley did, before he left, recommend a person from the firm he was working for, that he felt would be a good member for the Planning Commission. We did receive a letter from David Kellner, expressing an interest in serving on the Planning Commission. And with his background and knowledge of the community, we believe that he would be an asset to our board. At this time, Doug Malik is serving as an alternate, and we would like to have him be moved into the seat that's vacated by Steve Beasley, and then Mr. Kellner would be appointed to fill Doug Malik's position as an alternate for the rest of that term. The alternate term will end in January twenty-eighth, and the rest of Mr. Beasley's term will end in, also in January of twenty eighteen, I'm sorry, twenty eighteen. And then at that time, then, they would be up for reappointment.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion, we approve Doug Malik as a new board member for the Planning Commission, and Doug Keller, David Keller, for the alternate.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Kellner. I can't see you for the poster board, but wave your hand, thank you.
Your Honor, we skipped the veterans' presentation.
Oh, it's one line right here, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I jumped right over that. I just, I was just cooking right along. So let's have that veterans' presentation right now for the veterans' part behind the, behind the city hall.
Good evening, and Mayor Baker, thank you for allowing me to come, and some of my fellow veterans here with me tonight. My name is Kent Cook. Councilmembers, I appreciate your time. My part of the Veterans Hall and Veterans Memorial Park effort is to sell the bricks, to earn money, gain money, to improve and make improvements to the park itself. The few pictures I have up here for you are a brief explanation of what I'm doing, and my being here is twofold. One, tomorrow is a significant day in American history and veterans' history, and those serving on active duty still today, and those lost in the line of duty, and that is Pearl Harbor Day. A group of us will be setting out the flags on Main Street, and on North Federal and South Federal, and know that each of you will be thinking of veterans in your own way. As for the bricks, we have two examples, and, and the reason for that being, we're not sure, our image of the bricks for sale to veterans or family members to purchase for a veteran is reddish. And this is a paving stone, more red than the other, but we're hoping that when the company with them we're working does the carving for us, for veterans' names, their rank or rate in service, their branch of service, and the campaign in which they participated, or in a major war, and then the date of service, those three lines. The bricks I'll show, this is what they will look like, and you have these in other parts around town, not necessarily with this idea in mind. The ones closest to the bricks that, that we're hoping to obtain, that I've found, are at that Jason's Park, next to the depot, because those bricks are inscribed with three lines, and provide the same kind of sentiment that we intend to. This first photo here is not of, of our Veterans Memorial Park here in Riverton, this happens to be in what to me is the old Soldiers and Savers Home in Buffalo, but that's an idea of the flags and their significance. This center picture shows a brick that is inscribed, just as we intend to have ours inscribed, and the notion is that it's not just a brick, not just a stone, but it's their story, and this is, this is our story. We have a brochure that we've put together, and this third image shows that, an example of the type of brick that we would have, fifty dollars per brick. And that leads me to the second, basically, where I'm coming to, I did this, to list, elicit your help, if you will, all of you. We are looking at offering to major contributors, businesses in town, who would like to donate toward Riverton's Veterans Memorial Park, and they would have a larger paving stone, we anticipate twelve-inch by twelve-inch stone, that would allow center cut for a business's logo, if you will, plus the additional inscriptions, with or without a color. And the, the business contributors' stone, we would see a minimum of one hundred dollars donation. This, this middle portion is just a, a very small-scale photograph of the most up-to-date blueprint rendition of Veterans Memorial Park. And my reason for setting the model out in your hallway here, our hallway, is to attract attention. I believe that the only way that this will be successful in a reasonable amount of time, meaning selling these bricks, that's my job, to see to it that it gets done, is to have exposure, and that's a big space, so I ask to take advantage of it. And beginning on Saturday, I'll take advantage, if it'll allow me to have a display up in the fairgrounds during the craft fair on the tenth, and we'll hopefully see some of you there. This bottom picture, as you can see, is a heightened rendition of, of Veterans Memorial Park, but it's the red outline that people need to see, and the exposure with the display, like, as out front in your hallway, is the outcome of the five brick. What does it look like? This is supposed to what it will look like, and where will it go? And it will be in this circle, completely around the center of the park. There's a stone there currently, and as, as those individuals who are responsible for that part of the upgrading of the park will present at a later date, you'll notice in this picture that, that the center is bare. So if I may, give to each of you a, a brochure, to keep yourself, to make use of yourself, if you don't have a use for one, to give it to someone whom, you know, to be a veteran, or someone who has a family member who is a veteran, or perhaps, as you look back in your own brief histories and hours, you may in fact have someone very close to you who was a part of the start of tomorrow's events of Pearl Harbor Day. The brochure we'll give to a person or a family member who wishes to make the purchase is a fourfold brochure. It has this display on it, so they can see it. It has the blueprint display, so whichever one of my fellow veterans, or I am, am actually making the sale, the sale, can show on the blueprint where that brick may go. As an example, perhaps some of you are acquainted with a former mayor of the city of Riverton, I believe, who, who was awarded the Silver Star for his actions in Vietnam, and...
Thank you.
Hopefully, one of these from one of you will wind up in...
Here's him.
for me to ask his express permission, but at some time in the near, very near future, I'm thinking, or we're thinking, in terms of three-week intervals, the display that you have out here now, tomorrow I will come in and collect that, get it ready for the craft fair on the tenth. We have a second model with a display somewhat larger than this, and it will be moving from place to place. We anticipate First Interstate Bank, Wyoming Community Bank, businesses in town, in our close proximity, where there is space to display the model. Where there isn't space to display the larger model on the table or on the stand, then we're having posters enlarged, two or two-and-a-half times the size of this poster, and will seek permission to, to put those on display in businesses around town. So as people see them, they may have questions of you, what's going on, and what is this for, and who can I get in touch with? Any member of our Veterans Hall group of veterans, be phone, phone numbers that can be reached, Veterans Hall from nine A. M. to one P. M., five days a week, and myself as chairman of the sales committee. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Any questions? Good, thank you.
Yes.
I, I have spent some time out there in the hall looking at the model, I'm excited to see what happens, and hope that, you know, we can be of service in, in putting this together. And so, you know, we get televised on Tuesday night, it's amazing to me how many people watch, and, and so if you, you know, need a little more time in front of the camera, the mic, you're welcome to, welcome to come and take up another minute, give us a progress report, okay? Be great, thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Now, the next item on the agenda is ordinance number sixteen oh five, on third and final reading, rezone of tract A and B, Cambridge Village subdivision, petitioner Seth Johnson. The city clerk, please read ordinance number sixteen dash zero zero five by title only.
Yes, Your Honor, proposed ordinance number sixteen dash zero zero five, on third and final reading, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the city of Riverton, Wyoming, designating the rezone of tract A and B, Cambridge Village subdivision, to the city of Riverton, Fremont County, Wyoming, from residential P. U. D., Planned Unit Development, to R- A residential.
The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance sixteen dash zero zero five on third and final reading.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion, we adopt the ordinance number sixteen, zero dash zero zero five on the third and final reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Would the clerk, city clerk, please conduct a roll call vote?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilmember Martin Canaan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Kyle Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Sean Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Holly Gibbon.
Yes.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
Yes, I declare that the motion has passed. Next item of business is council committee reports and council member roundtable. Do you have anything for us tonight? Councilman Canaan?
Sir, the only thing I have is this coming Saturday, the veterans are having their breakfast with Santa, again, down at the fairgrounds, again, open to the public. It starts at eight o'clock and goes from eight to ten.
Your Honor, last night, we had our school district number twenty-five rec. board meeting, and we, number one item was, we paid the bills. We also had an extension for the splash, splash pad until twelve thirty-one, was for their money for two thousand and seventeen. And the applications for funds will be on January the ninth, at the school board, at Admin Building. At six thirty, we'll have our pre-meeting, and then at seven, we'll start the presentations. And then the grants will be awarded in February. And that's all I have.
Okay, so explain to me again, the splash pad, what'd you do there?
Last year, we gave them some money, and they weren't able to use it yet, so what we did is give them an extension till the end of the, two thousand and seventeen.
Okay, through seventeen, all right, good. All right, thank you, understand that now. All right. Mr. Larson?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, okay. Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, I think I'm gonna surprise still Stephen and Kyle, but we had the opportunity to meet this week, last week. I don't know, days run together. Last week, I think we met with the Eclipse Working Group. Had a real good turnout, I think, we had quite a few business owners, people from support staff within the city, and I think there's some good work that was done, is, you know, everybody's saying, oh, that's in August, but you know, you look at the big picture, August really isn't that far away for that kind of people to hit up and stuff like this. So I think it's good, and just sent out an invitation for those, many people you say are watching out there, that if they want to get involved, please come up. January tenth, at ten o'clock, we're gonna meet again up here at the city hall. January tenth, at ten o'clock, we're gonna meet again up here at the City Hall, um, the more minds we can get together to try to figure this out, I think the better it's gonna be, then also, um, the splash pad is doing a New Year's Eve formal, um, trying to see if we can come up with funds to buy a table, um, three hundred dollars a V. I. P. table, this'll probably be the last year that they'll do their New Year's Eve, uh, silent auction and stuff, because they're hoping to have this thing financed by the middle of two thousand and seventeen, so, um, I think a good chance for the city to come together and a little bit of support for them, and if anybody wants to go, we can pay for the table, and they can enjoy the table, 'cause I think, I don't know, most of us are gonna be in town, or whatever, but we'll have seats out there if everybody wants to use it.
Okay, thank you. Holly?
I don't have anything, Your Honor.
Nothing, okay, city administrator?
Uh, we're not gonna have a work session next week, um, and our trash discussion with the Northern Rappahoe's will probably be sometime in January, initially, we're gonna do December, but the solid waste district, Andy Frye, really wants to be there at this meeting, and he will be gone that day, and so we're gonna push that back into January to have that discussion, and that's all I have, Your Honor.
I have one question for that.
Go ahead.
On that solid waste thing, is that gonna be on a work session?
We could put it on a work session.
I would rather see it in a work session, and try to make a decision here, the council.
Yeah, we'll put it on the January work session.
Okay. Okay, so, mayor's, mayor's comments, uh, while we're coming on to the holiday season, uh, we've had a couple of pretty nice, uh, Christmas programs already in, in Riverton, and, and, uh, more to come, and, um, hope everybody has a, a great holiday season, and can find plenty to do in December to, to stay busy. And, uh, I don't have anything else to talk about, so, uh, if we're all done this evening, seems like we should stay longer. So, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.